Start, he's probably, there it goes.
Good.
Your idea.
Just want to make sure that we're official.
The co-host has asked me to start my video. What do you mean? Oh, my goodness. Sorry about that.
That's okay. There you go.
Okay.
I can ask myself too.
Well, let's, it's 4:40. Let's call the meeting to order. And, you know, give John a couple of minutes. We'll start with a review of the minutes. Has everybody had a chance to look at them?
Yeah.
Yes.
I have no questions.
No, I have neither. So, I move to approved minutes.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Any opposition? Nope. So, the carries. So, let's start with the site plan. Josh, Celia, I'm Jean Burnham. I don't think we've ever met.
No, I don't believe so.
Nice meeting you now.
Nice meeting you as well.
Thank you.
So, I'm Josh Edmonds with Simple Integrity and I'll be kind of walking you through Celia's project. If you have any questions, interrupt and ask. I assume everyone has the plans.
Josh, if, so one second. Jake, I understand that this is, we're on today for a request, for a recommendation from the-
Well, it's however you guys want to handle it. I mean, the trustees have asked for recommendations from both the HPARB and the planning board to go back to the trustees at their meeting next week. HPARB last month, or last week also just did a review of the plans and approved, you know, everything based on the approval of the special use permit. You guys have a site plan review that has to be followed through and I'm not really sure what steps or how you want to proceed.
Well, we might as well proceed as reviewing the site plan. But we can't do a final review until after the trustees grant a special use permit because we're required to include any conditions that they might place into the final plan. So until we have their final input, we can't do a final. But, we can review it now and after review decide if we want to call for a public hearing, which is required for the next meeting contingent on approval.
Why would there be, if the village trustees are having a public hearing, why would you need to have one after that?
Because the statute requires it. Not my choice.
What, what portion of this requires a public hearing? Just out of curiosity.
The part of the village code that deals with site plans.
If no variances are required, do we still need a public hearing?
Yes.
The public hearing is based strictly on the site plan review section of the code. It has nothing to do with the variances. It's just typically residential properties do not need to go through site plan review unless it's a special use permit or in the waterfront overlay district. Or there's steep grades and you meet two, this project meets two of the requirements. So.
Gotcha. I thought that the trustees permit was going to handle the public hearings. So there'll be another public hearing.
Yeah, but if we're on video, which I assume we will be at the next meeting, all the public input will have to be by email.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. Josh, do you want to take us through the plan now?
Yeah, yeah. If everybody has the plans, then I'll kind of just walk you through it. So, the empty lot down on Pioneer Street, next door to the Oxley's current house at 14 Pioneer. They'd like to build a single family two-story home there. It is in the waterfront overlay district and so the trustees have, we've put an application into the trustees and they're looking for feedback. We're working within all the standard setbacks. I know that the trustees can do, can sort of add some or take some away or whatnot at their discretion, but we've tried to stick to everything within the current setbacks and zoning. And so, we're looking at a house footprint of about 1440, 1,440 square feet with a detached two-car garage next to it. If you go to the next page, alright, this one is probably the best one for the site plan. And so you're looking at a detached garage with a driveway. We've got, we're treating the detached garage as a secondary structure, which has a 10% side yard setback at nine foot. The house has a 20% setback at 18 feet. We are slightly farther back. We're proposing a 32-foot setback on the house. The average setback on the street is 26 feet. And rear, we have, you can see the setback line on the rear there and we're well within, well within that. This house would not have a basement, just being as how high the water table is in its location. So we'd be probably looking at four-foot frost walls and then a slab inside. So, that's kind of the, the general gist of it. It would have a paved driveway that you can see where it comes out. We've got a fire hydrant, which is the circle right out front there. So we're aiming to miss that.
Good.
That would be good, right? So that's sort of the gist and I don't know if you guys have specific questions that I can answer.
If we could go to page 821 for a second, I have a question about that before we get back to this.
Is that forward or backward?
Forward.
Okay.
It's the one showing the house. That's it.
There you go.
Okay.
There appears to be, unfortunately, I can't, I don't have a cursor that I could show between the, between the house and the garage. Is that a covering?
That is a covering. That's like a, that's like a roof connector. Walk between the two buildings.
Okay.
So it's mildly attached.
So it's mildly, yeah.
It's not exactly detached, it's mildly attached.
Yes, yeah. The foundations are completely separate and there's no enclosed structure that connect the two.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
Yep.
Okay. Now we go back to 0.2, what we were looking at previously.
Could I just add, Jane, is that the term of art mildly attached?
No, I made that up, but I just, you know, it's subtly attached. So that, you know, to protect from the elements, but it's not, it's not shown on this.
Meaning, it, it's not considered a detached garage?
No, it is because as Josh-
So I do, I do consider it a detached garage and it's considered a separate structure from-
Yeah, yeah, okay.
I just-
You described the structure, the pad, the pavilion for the hot tub.
Yeah, so in the back there, where the hot tub is, think of it as like a paver patio. It's like a concrete, it'd be like a concrete pad or a paver patio. And then there is a freestanding, like timber-framed gazebo that is currently on the Oxley's property next door that they'll be bringing with-
Right. Oh, okay, thank you.
Got it.
Will there be any exterior lights in the back?
There will be exterior lights at all the, all the house doors and garage doors. Sort of like small sconces.
But no freestanding lighting?
No flood lighting or anything like that.
That is, Celia, I don't know if you or Laura want to weigh in. There's usually some general backyard lighting.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't expect to have floodlights. I, there, you know, it's possible we could put a light in, in the gazebo, but not, I mean, to light the gazebo, that's, that isn't likely anyway. We survive without one now. I wasn't planning to put any floodlights. I'm not a fan of floodlights. There will be lights on the front of the garage. I'm sure. And there will be lights on the back entrance, I'm sure, but I'm not sure I would say floodlights are what I'm going for.
And just so you know, Celia, I've created a electrical plan for us to review at our next meeting. So, that would be available then for submittal for the, the next round.
Right, so we, we haven't developed the plan yet.
No, well, actually I have, but I haven't reviewed it with you yet. And so some of the things that I'm saying, what you're saying actually confirms what I've already sort of suggested, which was lights at each of the doors and actually a light from the center of the hot tub and lights at the garage doors, but no floods.
Laura? Laura?
Yes?
Yeah, this is Jean. If we're, if we're going to have a public hearing at the next meeting, I'd like that lighting plan in the file before the announcements. So that anybody who wants to come and look at the plans at the village office, will we be able to see, you know, see that?
Any lighting that might be on the-
That should not be a problem. I assume the, the meeting is a few weeks off. I mean, we'll have this probably in a week.
It'll be next month.
Yeah.
Yes. So we'll have, we'll get it to Jane probably in the next week, week and a half.
Okay, good.
It's just that that, we haven't reviewed that yet.
Right, we will, yeah.
That's the fun part of jostling all the public hearings and still meeting a construction timeline. Starting, you know, the, the process early enough so that we can go through all the different boards and things like that.
Jane?
Yes?
The width of the driveway, I know for multi-family units, it's got to be 12 feet wide. For a single family, it's 10 feet. I couldn't find it in the zoning law, the width of the driveway.
We've never had a question. 10 is, I know what has been approved for like transient rentals, so let me just double check.
But is this a transient rental?
No, it is not. And that's why I'm saying, this is a single-family house.
Yeah, and for multi-families, it's 12, but it doesn't, I couldn't find it where it talks about driveways. It's no, it's not in the definition. I couldn't find it. You know, what's the width? You know, like most cars are seven feet wide or thereabout, so I mean, most people would get in and out of that without, should be able to get in and out of that without a problem, but it's worth the check.
Josh, just curious, is this going to be a passive solar?
Uh, yes.
Okay, I assumed, but I just wanted to-
Yeah, it won't be, it won't be a certified passive house, but it, it does have 12-inch walls, triple-pane glazing, a lot of the other features, heat pumps, energy reventilation system, as well as, we're trying, we're aiming for solar on the southern roof. So.
I thought I saw solar panels and-
The goal is to be zero.
Good, okay. Okay, are we still looking for the?
We're looking for it.
The driveway thing?
I'm looking, yeah.
That's an easy thing to correct before the next meeting, if you want to look that up later and get back to us.
Like I said, it, it, we've always done 10 for a minimum for anything that I've dealt with as far as transient rentals, because-
Right. It's probably okay, I just, you know, it's, now's the time to verify that. Um, in the back, there's a stream there. Is there any, I'm not familiar with the property, so if the stream were to flood and so forth, would it cover the backyard or is there a berm there or what for that stream in terms of?
It's, it's referred to as a stream, but it's more of a, I, I call it a drainage swell. It's pretty deep. When the, when we have very heavy rains, it does not flood that property. It does not flood our current property or the one that we proposed to build on.
Okay.
It does. We had that flood in 2006, 2006. And the maps were redrawn. We are not on the flood, we are not on the theme of flood maps. The lowest point is still above the flood zone.
That's the one that comes under Main Street, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's Willow Brook, it comes behind-
That's the one behind your house.
Yeah.
Right.
But the patio pavers would essentially be permeable, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm going to say I can't find anything for an actual description of a width for driveways in residential houses.
Lack of a, a rule means there's no rule, so.
We specify that we have to have a nine by eight, what is it, 18 or 20 foot parking space, so if, if we say we have to have nine foot, the 10 foot should be wide enough.
Yeah.
Now, there's no sidewalk on that side of the street, correct?
Correct.
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 Well,
what is our function right now?
Right.
That to just approve this preliminary plan?
To set a public hearing? What are we, yes, what are we?
Yeah, that's right. We have to-
Yeah, I'll move, we set a public hearing?
For our next meeting?
For our next meeting, good, yeah, good. When is it very important? At our next meeting.
And I believe you, you'll also be making a recommendation to the trustees for their upcoming meeting, whether
Yes.
any issues that you foresee with this site plan.
Your next meeting is the 20th.
Versus?
Did somebody second? Are we voting?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Do we have any recommendations to make to the trustees?
Well, let's, let's vote on this question then.
I thought I did just vote.
Okay.
Move it right ahead. Sorry.
Okay. Anybody opposed or abstaining? Then I guess it's unanimous.
Well, I'll move again, recommend approval with trustees. Or whether, there's no objection. We don't object to this, whether that way or- which is best? No objection or to approve?
We rec-
Recommend, approve?
Recommend it without modifications?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is what I would suggest. So I move to recommend it without modifications.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so Ellen moved it. Who seconded?
Jean.
Jean.
John? Did you vote in favor? I didn't.
He's unmute. John, you have to unmute.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I don't know who we're talking to.
John, you're on mute.
You're still on mute.
Do you need my vote? I mean, am I, am I supposed to vote in this or do you already have a quorum?
No, you, you vote because we're short, because Fred's not here.
Oh, okay. All right, then I, my vote is required. I, I approve, yes.
You vote, what do you vote on the other things? Unanimous, yes? You agree to set a public hearing? John?
Yes.
Yes? And do you approve the minutes from the last? Were you at the last one?
Yes, I do. I wasn't there, but I-
You were watching, you just weren't.
I was, I couldn't get in. No, I couldn't say anything.
Right, yeah.
Okay. Again, as I mentioned, Laura, any additions should be, let's see, Jane, what's your deadline for setting notice of public hearing?
Typically, the latest I have is, the longest period I have is two weeks, so if the hearing's on the 20th, I would need everything by the 6th.
Okay.
No problem.
Okay, great. Alright. Josh, Celia, Laura, do you have any questions for us?
Uh, no, thank you.
Well, sounds good. We'll see you guys at the public hearing, I guess.
Okay.
Bye.
Thanks, guys. Thank you all.
Safe, be well.
Hey Jean, I have a question for you about the minutes and John. So he's the, he makes up, he's entitled to vote, but he wasn't at the last meeting. Do I include him in voting for the minutes or I don't include him in voting for the minutes? Or do I abstain him? How do I, you put John down on that one?
Any way he votes.
Okay, so he's-
Typically, don't you just write down abstain?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I, it, it doesn't matter. I mean, I've, I've seen them, but I don't, you know, since I wasn't there, I-
Okay, I'll say you abstain because you-
Yeah, that's probably the logical.
You want to vote for me too? Okay, the Presbyterian church sign?
Okay, um, Paul Myhen, who was the one who submitted the application, could not attend, so I said I'd kind of act as the person that answers any questions for you guys, if there are any.
The first question is, the current sign is internally lit.
Correct.
Those signs internally lit. I don't know.
That was 2008.
Yeah.
It was brought up in the minutes, but it was not, did I not put those in? Thought I had. I mean, I don't have possibility, or way to look at what the code was back in 2008 without having a paper copy that, I guess, I can track one down at the village, but it's not on the E-codes for me to look back on to. So, I, you know, I mentioned that this was something that, you know, wasn't, wouldn't be approved currently, but they were hoping that because this is basically just a replacement of the existing that meeting, the height, height of the original sign and the width of the original sign, that basically, it's just kind of a cleanup and a couple extra lines of text, so that we were trying to make it as close as possible to the existing and just kind of have it as just repair more than anything else. The front, the one that's there now, it's falling apart. They have to bungee cord the glass front to it to keep it's closed. And-
Can't be repaired?
Not easily. It's, looks in really bad shape up close. I was there last week looking at it.
But the only, the only thing that is questionable has to do with the internal lighting, right?
Correct. I mean, as far as what, this sign, if it came to you without being internally lit, would meet the qualifications-
Right.
in regards to everything else.
What are the, if I could, I don't recall from all my walks around the village, but are the other houses of worship signs internally lit? Are any of them internally lit?
I think this might be the only, well, maybe the Methodist? No, I don't know.
No, I don't think the Methodist is.
Yeah, then the Catholic-
That's the one I walk by most often.
Yeah. The Catholic one is not and neither is the Baptist one.
I, they can light it, right? If they put a little goose neck light or whatever it is that it's just the internally lit thing.
Well, the, the code would read that you can only light one exterior sign. Now, I can't think offhand that they have any other exterior signs, so-
I don't believe they do.
They would meet if they were allowed to go, you know, external. Like I said, this is just something that, that's exactly what they have, that it showed up that you guys looked at it, you know, not you as in specifically the, the planning board back when this was approved, addressed the lighting issue. They actually, I believe, went back to the board and were asked to turn down the volume of the lights and they did it. And there hasn't been any issues since then. So, like I said, I-
So they asked to have it, let there not be light? Sorry.
Excuse me?
No, nothing.
He was just making a joke.
A very good joke. Well, I, I mean, if it was approved before, and it is pretty dim, I mean, I don't think it's intrusive.
Right, I mean, what, what was the definition of the inter, internally lit sign back when? Were we looking to avoid the, you know, like the gas station internally lit plastic signs or this is not really that kind of a sign?
It's just basically all signage in the village is not allowed to be internally lit, other than obviously this one at some point. And I know you guys approved the one at the firehouse.
No, we, we, we didn't.
Actually, we didn't.
I don't think we approved the firehouse. I think-
I don't-
That one just was able to do it just because of the situation that it is.
It appeared.
Yes, it appeared.
It literally appeared.
I like it. I will say, I like that sign.
This, this one to me seems, because it's a cabinet, I mean, I just, I just don't think it's the same as what the general definition of interior lit sign would, when I think of it, I think of like the big, you know, Denny's or McDonald's signs as interior lit signs.
It, it's similar to what it would look like if you actually had a light just shining on it as opposed to the lights being projected out behind the sign and everything.
Right.
Exactly. That's why I don't think of it as meeting the definition of what, I don't know what the intention, people who wrote the law. If somebody was on the board when it was written, then maybe they can shed light, but I think this to me is like a cabinet with little interiors.
Yeah.
I think a sign would have to be reconceptualized if they had to do exterior lighting because the lettering is changed every week. because the lettering is changed every week to reflect the title of the, the sermon and the scriptures.
That's true.
And if it were externally lit, then the, the door or the cover would, would probably reflect the light, and you wouldn't be able to see it. So I mean, so that, that is a reality. If we, if we say that it has to be externally lit, then they would have to go back to the drawing boards, I think, on that sign, and rethink the whole thing.
Well, in the first application, it says that the method of illumination of these fluorescent is knowing how these signs are constructed. I think fluorescent, it wouldn't be shining through, so in essence, it would be exterior, although covered by a portion of the sign.
Correct, and that's kind of why it's a strange.
A gray area.
Right, it's still, yes, it's externally lit, it's just externally lit from being, from inside the cabinet, as opposed to behind the light, behind the sign itself.
That's true.
Well, the sign isn't internally lit, there's lighting in the cabinet that surrounds the sign. So I, I wouldn't think, think of that as being internally lit.
Okay, then, like I said, this was just the, that's how it was written in on the original application is. And that's how it came to me, is they've always called it internally lit, so.
I'll move that we approve the, I mean, are we?
Well, this, this is.
Do we need a variation, variance, I mean?
Well, if you guys feel comfortable in accepting the fact that it's not classified legally or classified as internal, because it's still light that shines onto the front face of the sign.
Yeah, it's not shining through the sign.
Right.
Correct.
Then we can avoid, you know, then we can delete the internally lit part off the, their application and just describe it as a cabinet sign with the light within the cabinet that shines onto the face of the sign.
Yeah.
Do we need a motion on that?
Yeah. I'll move what Jane said.
Exactly, exactly. What she said.
I second what she said.
All in favor of what she said?
Everybody votes on what Jane said.
Yes, that we changed, that it is described as a sign with the light that is inside the cabinet shining on the face of the sign. It is not an internally lit sign that broadcasts light to the outside.
Okay, any opposition or extensions, motion carries?
That was, that was a motion to change the language on the permit. Now do we have to make a motion to approve the sign?
Well, I thought we were making, I thought we were approving the sign, but that changed the language.
Jane, can you clarify?
I'm going to be recusing myself in any of these votes, since I'm a member of the church, so.
Okay.
Well, actually, I am too, but Richard.
You shouldn't have said anything, you're naughty.
Although, we still have three, so as long as nobody else is.
But you're more important in the church than I am, Richard. You, you do things in the church like money and things.
Yeah, that's why I gotta recuse myself.
Yeah.
Okay, so just, just for the record, John and Richard are accusing themselves.
Yep.
So forget anything they said so far.
Okay, I forgot.
So I did, so the motion hasn't been seconded, then?
That's true.
I'll second.
Okay.
So what, what we're voting on is approving the application based on the language that Jane read to us.
Correct.
Okay, so we'll take the vote again, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous of the three voting members, even on myself.
David, Jane, and Ellen.
Got it. Okay.
Okay. I think that covers the agenda. Is anything else that anybody would like to discuss?
I have nothing.
Nope.
All right, I move to adjourn at 5:15.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
Oh, aye.
Okay, we're adjourned.
Well, and happy, what is it, St. Patrick's Day to anyone who.
Yes.
Yes, happy St. Patrick's Day.
Ciao.
Bye-bye.
Bye.